All right, this time we'll go and call the meeting to order. We want to welcome everyone to the boardroom tonight. Day is January the 8th, 2024. And as always, the board begins our meeting with a prayer and a pledge. So at this time, I would like to ask everyone to please stand. And Commissioner Brown will listen to our pledge. And Commissioner Allison will do our prayer tonight.
Let's pray. Dear God, thank you for this day. And thank you for watching over, protecting us, keeping us safe. We just ask you for your guidance and your leadership as we make decisions on behalf of McDowell County and the citizens of our county. We just ask you to keep a hedge of protection around each and every one of us. And we just ask you to be with our meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's come to the Tige. Tige, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. At this time, we have our agenda. Actually, the minutes first. So gentlemen, what's the pleasure of the board concerning approving the minutes as presented?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Commissioner Brown, going to motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, left side. Okay, at this time, we have our agenda for tonight's meeting in front of us. First of all, are there any additions to the agenda tonight?
I'd like to add old business item E, update on sheriff's request.
Okay. All right. Any other items, when you can?
If we could add a closed session, maybe after citizen comment for personnel and economic development matters.
And I'll make a motion to approve with the additions.
Okay, motion to approve. Okay, discussion, all in favor, say aye. And opposed, left side. Okay, let's go to our first item on tonight's agenda. We have Mr. Marlon Brinkley with us, sir. Come on up. Our library director is here, and he has all kinds of good stuff happening down there on East Court Street. So, or West Court Street. So we look forward to hearing you tonight, sir.
All right, thank you so much for your time. Just want to share just a couple of things, really. Let's see, the library is also doing a strategic planning process. And I'm also here to ask for your support for a books by mail program. To start off with the strategic planning process, we have one every five years. And this is, we're nearing the end of our current one. And so the next one will start in July. And so, and we always do this with the goals of trying to be better stewards of taxpayer money, trying to be more efficient with our time and energy, and to be, make the most impact in our community. And I think the end goal is to align libraries' resources to those needs and interests of the community. As you can imagine, trying to figure out what those needs and interests are is a lot of work. The staff have worked really hard. We've, currently, we've conducted over 30 one-on-one interviews with community stakeholders. We've collected over 400 surveys, and we hosted nine focus group sessions. We were also fortunate to get grant funding from the state library to hire consultants. They've been an enormous help in crafting the surveys, leading the focus groups, and pulling together all that information. Our hope is that by the end of February, we'll have landed on four to five overarching goals that will guide us over the next five years. And so I'm looking forward to sharing that with the community. The other item, like I was mentioning, is that we'd like to ask for your support for our service we'd like to offer, which is a books by mail. Through the program Free Matter for the Blind and Physically Handicapped, the United States Postal Service is able to mail materials like large print and audiobooks for people qualified at no charge. The post office is also able to pick up and return those materials from their homes to the library, again, at no charge. And as you can imagine, we're excited about bringing all these community resources directly to people's doorstep, particularly for those who are homebound or who may struggle to be able to get out of the house due to visual or physical ability. Our worry is that due to their circumstances, on the rare occasion, they may have some trouble getting their items together to be returned on time. And for that, we would like to ask for your support to waive overdue fines for those people who qualify for this program. And so.
In that case, you not give them the okay to rent more books then?
Right. They would, it's a recurring, like, money that they would owe to the library if they were overdue.
Okay, comments or questions? Ashley, anything you need to add, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the books by mail as presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. And opposed, left side.
All right, thank you so much, gentlemen.
Marlon, one question. How is the mobile, Bookmobile doing?
Oh, it's going great. We're everywhere, I tell you. If there's a festival, you'll see us there. If there's some community events connecting people to healthy resources, the library will be there. We'll show up to anything you invite us to, pretty much. But it's been a great resource or a great tool to get us out there. I think it's opened doors for us that we might not have otherwise. So we definitely appreciate the commissioner's support in creating that program for us.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all you and the library staff, too, Marlon.
All right.
Have a good evening.
You, too.
Thank you. Let's move to item B on our appointment schedule. This is a cryptocurrency ordinance hearing tonight. So Mr. Harmon, come on up, sir. Our planning director slash other titles he carries. But this is the one he's wearing tonight. So go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several months back, the board asked the planning board to look into a commercial cryptocurrency mining ordinance. You have that before you. We've had the first reading, and now we're asking for the public hearing. This, just to reiterate, this prohibits commercial cryptocurrency mining within the unincorporated areas of the county. It does not prohibit individuals from doing it at home.
Okay, so at this time, Mr. Whitten, the little guy. Just declare, okay? At this time, I declare the board in a public hearing setting to receive comments concerning cryptocurrency mining in McDowell County. And what we'll do, we'll just start on my right. And if you wish to speak concerning this topic, just come to the podium, I guess would be the best way to handle this. Okay, just come to the podium, and we'll be glad to hear you. So we'll just. Just raise your hand. Okay, come on up, sir.
Members of the board, my name is Glenn Kern. I'm an attorney based here in McDowell County. I'm here to express my support for the draft ordinance being considered. I provided this board with written public comments in January of last year. Those comments focused on concerns that I had after learning of a commercial cryptocurrency mine in Cherokee County near Murphy, North Carolina. The negative impacts of that mine have been reported on by WLOS, The Washington Post, Fox News, CNN, and other regional and national publications. Specifically, that mine has had detrimental impacts on residents that are near it due to its excessive noise production. And it has caused residents to leave their homes and try to live elsewhere if they were able to. I am concerned about impacts from any similar facility in McDowell County. From what I understand, cryptocurrency mining companies are looking to locate in rural areas of the southern Appalachians due to relatively low electricity rates, cheap land, and in general, the lack of land use restrictions. So I'm specifically concerned about noise impacts to residents and communities in this county, to the impacts to property values, and other activities that are part of our way of life, such as hunting, hiking, visiting Lake James and national forests, all of which could conceivably be impacted by a cryptocurrency mine that produces noise in the same way that the mine does in Cherokee County. I also have concerns about impacts to our electricity grid. I think we can all remember around Christmas last year, there were rolling blackouts in western North Carolina due to pressure on the grid. And cryptocurrency mining operations use, I'm sorry, commercial mining operations use a significant amount of electricity. And I do worry about the vulnerability that that might put on our grid in this area and to folks that need electricity. I'm not aware of any positive impacts that cryptocurrency mining, or again, commercial mining, would bring to McDowell County. They don't bring a meaningful amount of jobs to places where they're located. And my understanding is that they would not bring significant tax revenue either. So based on those considerations, I, again, in support of this board passing the ordinance. And regardless of your decision, I do want to express my gratitude to you for your approach to this issue. It's a confusing one for me, anyway. It involves emerging technology that until a few months ago, I didn't know existed. I would guess that many folks in McDowell County aren't aware of what crypto mining is. But it's nonetheless an issue that has the potential to impact folks here. And by issuing a temporary moratorium, holding now multiple public hearings, and giving the planning department ample time to analyze the issue, I think you've done a great service to the folks in this county, whether they know it or not. So on behalf of my family, my neighbors, and other citizens, I'd like to thank you sincerely. And those are my comments.
Okay, thank you, Glenn, so much. Do we have anybody else who wishes to speak? Come on up here and just tell us your name.
Thank you. My name is Diane Slater. And just over here, I just heard about the crypto mining. Duke Energy just sent out notices over the internet recently about people, the overuse of our electrical grid right now. And they're actually asking residents to curtail their use from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. So I think that's a substantial thing. And in my experience in living across the United States, I can know that for a fact, when California has these problems, it, I've watched it affect the whole entire one side of California. And that shuts down your traffic lights and everything. So I kind of agree with this attorney here. That's just my little bit. Thank you for listening. And I don't know anything else about the crypto mining other than I would be concerned about the grid and also the possibilities that we do know our grid across the North Carolinas. There has been some attacks on that as well. That's something to consider.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone else on my right wish to speak? All right. Just state your name for the record, sir.
Good evening. My name is Chris Price. I'm a recent immigrant to the county here. Just on general principles, I'm opposed to any interference with legal private enterprise. I understand the noise concerns with the installations in Cherokee County, in Murphy specifically. The issue there was specifically in the configuration of those crypto, commercial crypto mining operations and the way their cooling plants were oriented. Instead of a large enclosed facility like a lot of typical large data centers, they went with a modular arrangement that looks like storage sheds. For every second or third module, if you will, in the length of the building was a cooling unit to cool the processing bays on either side of it. And they did not have noise baffling considerations. They went with the cheapest possible configuration. I would support any ordinance that imposes adequate noise regulations on such an operation because it is, in fact, a significant impact on a rural community such as they have out there in Cherokee County as we have here. So I would only ask the commission to consider the fact that any legal private enterprise should not be interfered with unless absolutely necessary for the enjoyment of the properties around them by their neighbors, especially in residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on the right, anybody else wish to speak?
Neil Johnson. I have one, one's waiting, that is, you know, talk about the grid. You know, just simply that the data mining takes a priority on electricity. And so, you know, if we're going to take, make a specifically tailored one to allow the noise, we also need to take and do something to make sure that we have, that the capacity is there instead of taking away from the general population from other businesses. Because we can shut down other businesses that are already producing revenue, that hire people, okay? There'll be an issue there as well.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Anybody else on my right wish to speak? If so, come on up. Okay, we'll move to the left side of the room. Anybody on the left side of the room wish to speak concerning crypto mining? Okay. Nobody else? All right, at this time, do we need a motion now to go out of the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second, and then discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, left side. Okay, Ron, you'll come back up now. Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Harmon, our planning director, at this point? And then we'll give Mr. Whitten opportunity to speak, too.
I think pretty much everyone has spoken here tonight. Pretty much we share the same sentiments with on the idea of crypto mining on a commercial level.
I'll state one thing that I saw in the actual draft ordinance that this doesn't prohibit, and you hit on it, privately, small privately owned operations that do not require a building permit, an electrical permit, or any other permit required by the North Carolina Building Code. So they can still operate, but it's going to be on a small scale, evidently in their house, on their PC, right?
Right.
Is that, and that's what the board is recommending to our board, correct?
Correct. The, having to obtain a building permit for updated electrical or anything like that is what would warn us that this is probably going to be a full-scale operation and something that would cause issues.
Okay. All right, any other comments, questions? Mr. Whitten, anything you need to add, sir?
If you find that what is presented is agreeable, you are allowed to adopt it tonight effective immediately. And then if you did, the moratorium that's in place would terminate effect immediately as well.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? We'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman. I make a motion, we adopt. Second.
Second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye and opposed, left side. Okay, it's five oh vote. Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Go get some supper, Ron. All right, let's go to the next item on our appointment schedule. We have Mr. Nicholas Larson with us tonight. And welcome to the boardroom, sir, and we're glad to have you. And go ahead and, and give us some good information about the Pisgah National Forest.
Yeah, good evening, guys. Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. I want to start by apologizing. I think last time I was in this room, the paint was still fresh. So I don't have anything super pressing, but just wanted to find an excuse to kind of remind you guys that I'm here and I'm here to help and update you on some general activities happening across the national forest and specifically here in McDowell. So I'm going to start off a little bit with the trail work that we've been doing out there in Old Fort. As you guys know, our partners in Old Fort have received $2.5 million in state support for building out that entire suite of 42 miles of trail surrounding Old Fort. I don't think I need to explain to this board the value of that to not only the town of Old Fort, but Marion and McDowell as a whole. And I want to thank the county for their support. A project of that brevity doesn't happen without, you know, a lot of solid local government support behind it. So thank you very much for the help on that. The other one that I want to give folks an update on is Catawba Falls. As you guys are probably also aware, Catawba Falls has been closed for a while for some major repairs and improvements that we're making out there. I am super excited to report back that tag, tag construction is making really good progress. The bad news that I've got is that we were hoping to be able to open that this winter. It's not open. The good news is we got the funding to continue the construction that would complete that trail all the way up to the upper falls as well as the loop surrounding back around Allison Ridge. So I really appreciate people's patience and longer than we anticipated closure for that opportunity to really give folks a solid experience. I'll throw a tag in there. We are anticipating, like, the popularity of that as soon as it opens up and increasing the parking and increasing some of the restroom facilities out there. So we're starting to pull together plans for that, knowing that as soon as that opens up, folks will be excited to see it. We're also making some improvements to the Old Fort picnic area and the Curtis Creek campground. So if you guys have been out there of recent, you'll notice that the restrooms that we have are circa 1950s, 60s era. So we'll be getting some new restrooms out there and some improvements to the CCC era picnic shelter that's out there as well. So we're real excited to see that. The next thing that I want to give you guys a heads up on or kind of an update on is many of y'all may remember the Grandfather Ranger District had a national priority project that ended about a year ago, the Grandfather Restoration Collaborative Forest Landscape Restoration Project. National project that basically helped us to work with our state partners and our NGO partners to increase the amount of prescribed burning and wildfire risk reduction work happening across the national forest. Fiscal year 2023, last year, was the first year of a new, larger project across the entire Pisgah National Forest doing really similar things. So, so the exciting thing is we're getting another 10 years of additional attention and additional support for reducing wildfire risk, restoring fire-adapted forest, treating non-native invasive species across the forest, and improving water quality. Really big deal for us to have a 10-year additional funding and commitment to be able to develop those partners and work with folks like Trout Unlimited and the Nature Conservancy and all of our county emergency management and volunteer fire departments to help improve our conditions here and help really and truly make, make our community safer. Tied to that, the national forest is getting ready this winter to release an environmental assessment that addresses a lot of the prescribed burning and vegetation management associated to that workload for, for the Pisgah National Forest over the next 10 years. So hopefully sometime in the next couple of months, I can get on the agenda again to kind of run through what that, what that proposal is looking like. But we're super excited to be working at a much larger scale than we have in the past. Typically, when we propose a prescribed burn project or a vegetation management or a timber management project, we might be working in a single watershed, or we might be working in one concise area. This is looking across the entire Pisgah National Forest, really looking across that entire scope of our fire-adapted forest, where our communities are that are at risk, and really trying to make a large-scale impact and large-scale improvements on those conditions. So we're super excited about that as well. Just outside of McDowell, but I know a lot of our residents and a lot of our emergency responders rely on this area. We've been slowly making some improvements in Linville Gorge area with some new trail development, and we're anticipating to continue that. Now, the numbers on that are not near as exciting as what we've got in Old Fort, but the impacts are pretty big. As y'all know, Linville is an incredibly popular area, and we're continuing to make good progress to create loop opportunities for folks to be able to go on extended backpacking trips, not having to cross, cross over private properties as they have in the past. Also looking at improving some targeted rock climbing access points as well. So we're really excited to continue to make progress on that. The other, the last thing that I wanted to kind of give a recap on is the wildfire season for, for the national forest here. So this, this past fall was a particularly active fire season across western North Carolina. We had very similar dry conditions to what we had in 2016. What we didn't have is nearly the number of starts on national forest. A lot of that is directly tied to the good work of our North Carolina Forest Service and them getting out there and making sure that those fires are taken care of at the smallest scale possible and, and when they're out there. And then the other one is just in general, folks being much safer with their, with burning piles and taking care of their brush issues. So, so we really appreciate that. We did have, the two large fires that we did have happened to, McDowell got the short straw on those, and they ended up in Locust Cove and, and Clear Creek, areas that we've both had fire in the past. This year, throughout that season, the national forest in North Carolina hosted an additional, just on severity, not assigned to either of those fires. We had an additional 400 firefighters making their way through the national forest in North Carolina. Over 200 of those were stationed at some point at Woodlawn to help our county and help our surrounding counties to be able to respond to those fires. There's no doubt in my mind that between the good work of the North Carolina Forest Service and those additional resources is what kept our skies a little cleaner than they were in 2016. So I want to thank y'all's continued support for, for the North Carolina Forest Service in those regards to what makes a world of difference to us. That's what I had on my checklist. If you guys have any questions at all about those, I'm happy to take them. And then, and then I just want to remind you guys, I'm here, I'm a resource. I want to thank the library. My family uses the library all the time, so I'll give them a quick plug. But any, any way that we can help you out, just let us know.
Nick, as far as prescribed burns, our league's scheduled in McDowell County with, with all, with what, 30% of our land is in the forest service land, roughly? Are there plans, or is there a schedule for prescribed burns to help reduce large-scale wildfires?
Yes, absolutely. So what we've got on short order for this year is we have two burns that we will be prepping this spring for implementation. There's one along the 221 corridor, not far off of the Good Road there at the end of American Thread and all that area. So we've got one right there that we're working with the North Carolina Forest Service on, relatively close in that area. The other one is kind of in the hinterlands, up north around Spruce Pine in, not Big Lost Barrett, Singcat. So it would be the, the east side of State Route 80 up onto the Parkway. So those are the two in McDowell that we'll be working on. The Gap project that I alluded to before will be a much more, a much larger scale and really give us the ability to, to look at more of our communities. So I live, I live out around Hankins area, so I'm excited to see the area around Bald Knob included in there because that directly impacts my house and my family and neighbors and all that kind of stuff.
The one out on the Good Road, will that, will that be on the, let's see, I guess, the south side of the river or the north side?
It will be on the.
Or northeastern?
It would be on the east side of the river. Yeah. It'll be on the east side of the river, and that's being planned in coordination with the state. There's quite a bit of private property. The, the private landowner there is also planning some prescribed burning. And that's what we're trying to, one of the major things that we're trying to really encourage is, is try to find those ways where the work on, on the lands that I'm responsible for managing can make neighboring private landowners make their work easier, make their work more effective. If I can bring a fire up onto national forest, up to a road or a creek, to where you may not have to install a dozer line or have to pay for that additional cost, and that's exactly the, the kind of situation that we're trying to create, is find those opportunities to enable and, enable folks to be more successful and enable them to, to take action on their properties as well.
Thank you, Nick, for what you do.
Thank you.
Got a question for the estimated G5 Catawba Falls, Old Fort Park, and the Curtis Creek. Do you have estimated dates? And not going to hold you to it, but just trying to get something, be a little bit more educated because there's a lot of questions that are asked, when is, when can I go back up to Catawba Falls? And I'd like to be able to answer that if I could.
Yeah, late spring, early summer is what we're looking at. I can't give you a firm date quite yet because they're getting ready to release the contract for Allison Ridge this week, I believe. So we'll, we'll have better information. But everything should line up that late spring or early summer, we'll have a big ribbon cutting and all that kind of stuff because that's a, that's a huge deal for us. That's, that's, that is our most visited area on the national forest here on the grandfather. So we're super excited.
Is the, now, is the Pisgah National Forest still the most visited of all the national parks in the nation?
So this winter, we should have new numbers. Last year, we had a, we were, it was our turn for a national visitor use monitoring kind of program, the, the long-term monitoring. The Pisgah National Forest, excluding areas that have ski slopes, historically, the Pisgah National Forest has been the largest, largest visitation numbers in the country. I'm super excited and interested to see what those numbers hold this year, given the changes that we've seen post-COVID and even before COVID since approximately 2015. We've really seen nothing but growth on use of the national.
And that's amazing, too, when you think of the Grand Canyon and some of the sites out west, for that to be the number one visitor. It's been that way the last couple of years, correct?
That's right, that's right. Yeah, we've, we've historically been, I, I came here from the Kaibab National Forest, right next door to the Grand Canyon. We had visitation there of about 10 million visitors a year. The last time we had our visitor use monitoring for this area, it was 8 million people. So we are not far at all away from uses of, at the levels of some of these major national parks.
Is there going to be some information pamphlets given out by the National Forest Service?
On, on use?
On use for G5 or Catawba Falls, stuff like that?
Yes, we're, yeah, we'll, we'll have, we'll have a lot of media on, on that. We'll, we'll have a ribbon cutting. We're planning to really celebrate that. We're planning to really celebrate that. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
That's good.
Entirely. And likewise for visitor use, once we have those formal numbers out, we'll have, we'll have two rounds of things. There will be an informal, informal social media stuff that goes out and then there will be stuff for the social science people to kind of geek out on, on what that means for economics and everything else.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Larson, thanks for being here. Thanks for the good update we've gotten out from you.
Thank you, yes.
Have a good evening, sir. Okay, this time let's go to our old business item A. This will be our strategic planning process. Mr. Wood, let's have a serve.
Yes, sir. An update to a process you kicked off, I think in August, in a special meeting in that month. At that time, you authorized working with the NC Department of Commerce on a strategic plan for the county. And as we noted at that time, you think strategically and have for many decades, but perhaps haven't had a document to show that thinking. So you changed that by kicking that off in August. You laid out some strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats as they described them to you that night. A lot of key words, a lot of things that Mr. Larson talked about tonight were mentioned as far as our natural resources and trails and activities on the outdoor side, on the tangible side, a lot of economic manufacturing was discussed as definitely one of our strengths. And so since that time, I've mentioned, there's been a couple of work group meetings, which is primarily county leadership, department leadership. There's also some external agencies with our school system and college economic development that have been involved. Did meet in December. At that time, there were some results from the public survey that was put out and it's one of those when you put it out, you get a lot of feedback about the good, bad and ugly. And the good, bad and ugly in this aspect related to the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And so spoken to the commerce staff, they're taking those results and kind of putting them in the, in the package there. The next planning meeting we're working to set up with that lead group will focus on some of the vision based on comments, again, that you all have made is what we're working on. The citizen, what staff and others want to do, this is what you want to do based on things you've said.
How many, just, just real quickly, how many people responded from the public? How many surveys?
I think it was around 157. So it was a really good response, one of the higher ones that they have seen in this type process. So appreciate the, of course, the public activity in that. The goal that you've laid out is to have another public meeting later on in the process. So they have had some staff change in that group, so I'm working with the co-lead there on setting up the next meeting. Really hope to have a presentation maybe April or May back to you. So it's proceeding very well.
Okay, comments, questions about board members? There being now, let's move to our next item on our old business, under old business, that would be our building projects. And there's a lot going on, Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
A lot going on. So if you look at your memo, we do try to sometimes organize things on our documents in order of priority. And in this instance, we start off the memo with our DSS capital needs. You identified probably several years ago, once some of our other needs were met, mainly the courthouse, the emergency services, that you wanted to focus on the DSS facility, which again is primarily in the old AMP on East Court Street. It's also in two other locations in Marion and all three are full. And so since that identification that was made, we have been working with you to identify different strategies and locations, funding sources and so forth. And what you talked about last year was advocating for funding, asking for funding from the state since it is a more or less a state function that you're providing here. The state has added responsibilities to us through the means of Medicaid expansion, those sorts of things. So that's added the need for space on our end. So we have had some conversations with our legislative delegation and as I've noted before, they've encouraged us to have a little bit more than a cost estimate for some of the advocacy. And so that means having a site plan, it means having maybe some basic renders done and a little bit of, a little bit more thought into it. So some time ago, we had prescreened an architect, Little Architects, which is out of Charlotte. They were selected as the most qualified. They can get started on that preliminary work right away. We've got a meeting set up within the next week to do that, to try to get some things laid up for the session to start in, I believe, April. So you do have a proposal attached, the cost to do that, which to be honest, we would have to do at some point anyway. So this is work and costs that we would not have to take on later on. The total is $38,000 and our recommendation is that that be paid for out of the ARPA interest fund.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and accept that as presented as well as the pay.
Okay, motion second. Valen, discussion. I, I add one thing that Patrick, I think you and me might have been on the school board when Old Fort was built.
Yes.
I'm not certain, but the first time that you guys applied, you didn't have all the plans and everything and it got turned down.
That's correct.
Second time you had it, you just had it down to the dot, to the point, the cost estimates and the plan. So I think this would help us this time, this would be the second go around with the state to try to get that funding. And I think, I appreciate that motion.
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye. You oppose, like sign. Okay?
Thank you. The next item is a recreation center. Dow News did an article about that for things upcoming in 2024, you saw that. But you, you directed several months ago now that the project be reworked as far as the scope to focus right now on replacing the 45-year-old swimming pool and the, the parking and driveway improvements we made, as well as the, the ball field maybe be prepped for future work. So maybe taking out some old infrastructure that is dilapidated. I had a conversation with the chairman today about what's timeline and I've been told the bids should be advertised this month and that's a 30-day turnaround usually or less. And there would hopefully be an award made in March based on that timeline.
And the amount of money that's available for that project?
It's around $4 million. And again, that's state funding that was provided to you in the November 21 budget. So it's an update right now.
Okay.
All right. The last item you had, we've talked about improving or replacing animal shelter, again, back to the state. That's a state monitored activity and the state requires that we have a suitable facility as a county. And so we're looking at property a little bit south of the current facility. Right now, we're looking, have completed a wetland delineation and a topographical survey to determine if it is absolutely suitable for a building. So you've talked about doing some fundraising for that. And so once the engineers sign off that it can be built there, then I think the idea was to start on that fundraising, to absolutely be sure.
Okay, comments, questions? If not, let's go ahead and move to item C under old business. This would be the water system projects, which we have many that are underway right now. So Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
That's a good word for it, many. So we're working right now on what we call Phase One, which is NC 126 Wildlife Road, Lonesome Pine Drive, Jack Corputing and Bentwood Drive. Lonesome Pine Drive is, is complete but not active, activated. I believe they're working on 126 now. The same contractor will do all of those roads that I mentioned over the next several months. And they're moving very quickly, which is good to see. We have a line planned for Hoppy Tom Hollow. This is a state grant that we received about 14 months ago. The difference between this state funding and some of the other ones we've been provided is this one will pay for the plumbing for the residents. Again, if you want it, it'll pay for your plumbing. If you don't want it, we're going to keep moving. So we're working on a letter right now. It's been approved by Mr. Riddle and will be mailed out to the property owner record. So we've been doing a little bit of outreach there to those residences. Phase two of Nevo, which is again coming back closer to city limits, Memorial Park Road, Old Number 10, primarily there, we're working on that line. We've heard some combat, comments back from the state last week on some permit questions that they had. Related to that project, we need to move the master meter that is near Stacy Hill Road. We found a site right off of 70, if you know where Beaman Road is, it's right, shuts off of 70 there. There's a little piece of property that is maybe not perfect for anything except for a water meter, a master meter in this case. And so that property is owned by David Patnold. We identified that property, went and spoke with him. He's agreeable to having that master meter on his property in exchange for two water taps for residences he has down below. Considering that cost is about, I guess the value of that would be about $2,000. Staff thinks that's a very fair cost considering the last one we had to pay for was about $6,000. So we would ask that you approve.
So we say $4,000 by agreement to have it on that property.
Yes, sir.
And that $4,000.
And then what that would do is it would move the control and ownership of the, the county's water system about a mile and a half closer to Marion and on an existing line.
We need to take action on that.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. You oppose, like sign.
Thank you. Wrapping up on updates, we're working on the East End project, which is around 126, around the golf course area. Again, a state grant that we sought and received that will pay for the work in that, in those communities. And we had a property owner meeting in this room about a month ago, very positive, a lot of bad well problems in the area. This will be a very complex project because essentially we have about five existing water systems that will be replaced by a county operated and run and own water system. Will be doing the plumbing as part of this project, much like Hoppy Tom as well. So if you've been around a while and at least one of you have been on the board since 2003 or four, you will remember the Eastfield Sewer Project. This is not that complicated, but it is maybe the most complicated one we've had since then as far as being involved in homes and connecting a lot of homes to water in this instance instead of sewers. So it'll take time, but we've got a very cooperative and understanding set of residents there. And lastly, under Nevo, I did receive a contract proposal for the work around Exit 90 there. I received that, I think, Thursday, so it'll be in your next, next month's packet and that'll serve some businesses in that area. So this is an Appalachian Regional Commission grant we received. Then under the Providence area, the West Marion Elementary area, just to recap there, we do have a $500,000 Appalachian Regional Commission grant to extend water down Sugar Hill Road. The state has provided 3.88 million in appropriation. The chairman asked me about this today. Last month, you asked that I contact the staff to ask for status update on that funding. I did. They clarified with me last week that they wanted to know that the county was going to own and operate the system. And I said, absolutely, once it's complete. And so I haven't heard back yet from that communication and I've made outreach again to them. So hopefully that interaction means that our letter is forthcoming within days. And so once we have that letter, we'll have enough to go on as far as going forward with engineer selection. And then once you have an engineer contracted, then we can start design and, and move on with that work. Again, the letter from the Board of Education to allocate funding towards this project is in their packet. I just talked about engineering. So a lot of work in two different parts of the county underway and soon to be underway in water.
Okay, comments or questions about board members concerning any of the water projects? Do want to state that we, again, appreciate the school board, Board of Education and their partnership in providing funding to help get that water line to the school, understanding that the project would be roughly $1.7 million based on recent projects we have and their contribution to $500,000, which is great. So here again, partnership corporation is where it's at. So we appreciate that. Let's move to item D under old business broadband update. Mr. Wood.
No action for this item, but I did want to update you that we're getting close to applying for the completing access to broadband funding also known as CAB. I sat through a webinar last Friday on this program. The state has done a fantastic job of mapping, probably with a really close accuracy, the, the households that are in this county that are not planned to have broadband at the, by the end of 2025.
Do we have a number, do we have a number?
2,700. So if you remember Mr. Tank, who was here maybe four or five months ago from Spectrum, Spectrum has been very aggressive in receiving federal and state funding for broadband expansion. And he had several thousand, I think close to 4,000 households that they were going to serve between federal and state funding in the next year plus. Based on the state's mapping, and again, it's, I don't want to make up a number, but to make up one, maybe it's 95% accurate. It may be 85, but it's probably not 100. But if you go on that number according to the state, after Spectrum does all their work and anyone else, we would have about 2,700 households unserved. So there's a really good map that is out there and it shows it as a red dot, just a great color for that. The good news is that you get to see that and the providers that are going to be applying for CAB see that. And so what they'll do is they'll, the state is going to advertise this opportunity based on the funding that's been laid out, over $2 million total. And providers will say, we can serve that. And what they'll do is they'll say, well, we'll serve as many of those 2,700 as we can. And it's probably going to be near where they have existing service. So it's, it's possible, but probably not likely that a provider that's not currently in the county would expand. So it's probably going to be a Spectrum, probably an Optimum, one of those two would be my guess. But they would look at how much the budget would be, which is again around 2.3 million, I stand corrected. And they would look where existing lines are for their own companies and then they'll say, okay, we can serve this area, we'll serve this area. And then the state will work with the county to help select, select the appropriate bidder. The unfortunate, the way it looks for where all those red dots are, they're pretty much all over the county. There are some focus of those spots around the Crooked Creek area, between Nevo, Dyersville and probably Old Lempel Road, that area in the northern part of the county. So there are, they're spread out, but there are some areas where maybe there's some concentration. So I don't think it's a situation where it's so obvious that I would be asking you to say, well, let's favor this area over another one because I don't, I don't think that's going to, if it was very obvious, I think we would be asking for that, but not to really play favorites, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So, but the next step is that opportunity posted and then they'll help us to hold, hold our hand through the procurement process. So I've heard 30, 45 days from when that's going to be posted. So hopefully maybe by Catawba Falls being open, we'll have the bids open on that broadband work. So fingers crossed.
All right, comments, questions? All right, comments, questions?
Of the three areas you've mentioned, that's where we're getting all the questions about it.
Absolutely.
Crooked Creek, Nevo, Dyersville, and Old Limble. So that's the area.
Some of the confounding part too, again, the mapping data is really good, but there's surely errors in some of it. But I was, I don't mind noting them because it's not an individual or a family, but one of the things we would like to do if they're not being served already or part of the planned work is to make sure our community anchors, meaning fire departments and schools, have broadband. All of our schools do, as far as the public schools, and I'm pretty certain the private schools do as well, but we'll double check. Not all the fire departments have broadband. So we've asked to do some outreach. We do know that the new facility for Sugar Hill Lot for Cove does not have broadband through the site now. Neither does the main station for Dyersville. And so if you look at the map, right next, almost literally the next parcel over for both instances have service, but it's not showing as an option for where the departments are. So I've sent those to Spectrum, who provide the service next door. So hopefully, it's just throwing a line through the air, something very obvious and easy, but we're trying to do that. Because they do have early voting there, and obviously the fire department and election day voting as well, the fire departments need to have broadband for their training. So that's, we're trying to get that implemented right now.
And remind the board too, the board committed a million dollars, which generated, how much in money for the expansion of broadband?
For the grid grant, that was about an $8 million project total, and about roughly half of that was state funding and half of that was the company. And so the CAB will be a smaller, even though you're allocating 900,000, the way the formula works out, the company can put in as much as they want to, but the state is only going to do a certain amount based on that. But, so it does lower the project amount that the state is going to participate on. But still a lot for a million dollar.
And that does deplete all the ARPA funds that we had allocated specifically for broadband.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good deal. Now, let's move to item E. This will be the sheriff's update, the request. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. So twice now, you've had a request presented to you by staff on behalf of the sheriff. As I've noted in prior communications, there's a statute, which is 153A-98, specifically C4, that was adopted in 2015. And I've said at least once or twice, when it's been discussed, that sometimes statutes are adopted and passed, and passed on to us to implement, and they're not really clear. And I would certainly say this is one of those that you need a lot of sets of eyes to look at and interpret and determine really what the intent was. And so basically, what the language states, based on some interpretations there from the school government and others, is that you can take a broad interpretation that that statute change was intended to protect address information for law, sworn law enforcement officers in the community. It's not very clear, again, the way it's written, but you can interpret it that way based on what the school government has said. I've suggested this, maybe to this board, that the statute needs to be improved and better clarified if that was clearly the intent, but there's a lot of people in Raleigh that need to be convinced to change statutes sometimes and make that bigger fish to fry. So you've not yet followed that interpretation, but as I said the last time, you're always able to follow that interpretation whenever you would like to.
Were you able to get any information from the legislators of our ask last meeting, or last night meeting?
Yes, I did hear feedback from them that they would send that to the legislative attorneys for research. I haven't heard back on, from them as far as any intent that might have been there.
Did they give you a timeline of any kind?
They did not. My suspicion is that since they're not in session, I'm sure they do have staff that are working, but they might have a skeleton crew right now until the session does kick off.
It's unlikely you're going to hear anything back for a while.
Probably true.
And it was specifically for law enforcement only, not other departmental, government, local?
That's right.
When the board discussed this the last time, second time, I had the COVID and the flu, so I was not able to be here. I didn't want to spread the love of you guys. But anyway, so I did talk to Ashley the Friday before to get information about it. And Ashley, as far as the financial impact to the county, you said it's going to be very minimal, correct?
That's right. Any, anytime there's changes made to GIS, there is a cost that we are doing that at least once a month now. And if we did it more, it would benefit us in other areas, like Board of Elections or wherever else. But, you know, we can, again, we're doing those updates regularly now, and any type of work like this can be done.
So there won't be a strain upon staff, correct, as I want to hear from you?
Not on the financial piece. Anytime you add any sort of new, you know, there's a learning curve for the involved departments, but as far as what it is, it's not monumental.
I think that the past two times that this has come up, and we denied it both times, I stated my position on it. I spent 19 years in law enforcement after talking with school of government, our board I don't feel that the law is clear on what we must do. Maybe it says what we can do, but I don't think it's clear on what we must do. I personally feel that, and I am very loyal to our sheriff's office here after spending 19 years with them. But we've got DSS employees that folks might get mad at. We've got EMS employees that folks might get mad at and want to know where they live. They might want to know where I live. I retired from the sheriff's office. But I understood when I took that job what the risks were. And I feel like that to do something like this is discriminatory to other county agencies such as EMS, DSS. I have not changed my position on this, and I will not change my position until there is a clear law that tells us that we must do this. We've got Marion Police Officers here that this would impact. We have got Highway Patrolmen. We've got Forest Service Law Enforcement, not just sheriff's office employees. So no disrespect, but I just, I just feel like that the way that we are approaching it is discriminatory against our other citizens.
Ashley, what's the, I don't have it in front of me, the statute, is that, is that what?
Yes, sir.
The statute, does that state, you know, and I hear Lynn loud and clear, not kicking back on anything he's saying, but does that, does that mention any other group, which it just states law enforcement? Is that correct? Just so I get it clear in my mind.
Yes, sir. The specific request is tied into law enforcement officers.
And is that sworn, I guess, sworn law enforcement? That was the initial request?
Yes, sworn law enforcement.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Any action on it?
Move or deny the request?
Okay, you have a motion and a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Right. All against, nay?
Nay.
Right. Is there any other motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the sheriff's request that's presented. And I think we still need clarification, so I'll make that part of the motion to make sure staff follows up with the letter that we sent. But I do make the motion that we approve the sheriff's request.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
What's the difference? Why, what's the, what's the, what's the change from last time on asking for our legislators to educate us? Why the change now? Why was that? Why did we vote positively for it last month, and now we're, now you're making this motion? I'm just asking the question.
My change was specifically from speaking with the sheriff and getting his point of view on it directly, and also speaking with staff.
Any other comments or questions?
Before there's a vote, however those things go, so I'm clear, I know what the motion said, but I need to know what you're intending. So you're, you would want to redact information for the sheriff's office?
For the sheriff's office, correct.
Active, active staff?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the word was sworn.
Sworn law enforcement.
Sworn law enforcement.
I meant, I'm sorry, I meant the sworn.
Active sworn law enforcement is what it was.
That's correct.
Okay.
Just a little bit more on discussion. I am going to be interested in getting the information from our legislators before I make a change, but my vote will stay as it was.
Okay, all right. Anything else?
Did the vote change?
That moved it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, okay, motion carries. All right, let's move to item A under new businesses. This will be a board, a budget update to the board. So Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. So you have in your packet the property tax collection report. It's actually, I think, two months in there, but what you have there also includes through the month of December, in your collection rate of 72.79%. A lot of activity happens, starting on the second and through the fifth, and after the fifth, anything paid, of course, is delinquent. And so that's why the second through the fifth is always a pretty active time. So we'll have those numbers for you at the end of this month. Sales tax report is also included, and that shows the first three collected months in the fiscal year. You have one project budget ordinance. I talked about East End earlier. This would get the East End project on our books. And you have several budget amendments, being GF 13 through 18 and SP 2, which is a school project fund related to some improvements they have underway there on the campus and high school.
Okay, comments or questions for staff?
You can approve all those.
Move that we approve the budget items as presented?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, last sign. Let's move to item B under new businesses, this will be administrative items. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Just two different items, three, if you consider it's two separate water write-offs. There's one for $142.81 and a large one of $670.53, and that one is from, you know, a customer has a very large leak, obviously. And then the second item is a drug and alcohol policy update from our transit system. And I will note that that is based on being compliant with state and federal requirements.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, last sign. Okay, let's go to the board appointments. Item C, Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir. You're the acting clerk tonight also, so the floor is yours.
So just, we did not have board appointments noted in the December meeting, so just to make sure these are brought to your attention as well as the public's attention tonight, we'll make sure these are posted online and shared with the McDowell News. It's a second reading for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council for a faith-based seat. So if you attend a faith institution and know someone that has an interest in preventing juvenile crime, please have an application filled out and sent to us. There's also three other vacancies under the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We've had some turnover there, people moving jobs, that sort of thing. There's a second reading for the Library Board of Trustees for the Old Fort District. There's a second reading for one vacancy in the Historic Preservation Commission, and a first reading for an upcoming vacancy on the Transportation Advisory Board. So next month, we'll hopefully have some applications for you.
Okay. And we want to encourage anybody that's watching or anybody present, if you want to get involved in local government in your community, please see our clerk to the board, which will be here on the 16th, our new one, or staff, and we would love to have somebody sign up and raise your hand to serve on some of these boards. Okay? So throwing that out there to you. Let's move to item D, Tax Matters. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Not a lot of tax matters this month. You do have the vehicle refunds that are pending your approval.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Will be approved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, last sign. Okay. At this time, let's move to citizen comments. So we've got a sign-up sheet back at the back with our attorney. So if anybody wishes to speak, you are more than welcome to sign the sheet and come on Okay, at this time, do we have a motion to go into closed session for personnel matters?
Totally.
Okay, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Economic development too.
And also for an economic development matter also. So personnel and economic development matter. Okay.
We voted?
We voted.
Oh, okay.
I think my comment kind of happened right in the middle.
Motion to approve this?
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Motion adjourned.
No, we got to make a.
We've got to approve all the minutes.
We've got to approve the closed minute.
Motion to approve the minutes from the closed session, last closed session we had.
The last two, right?
11th and the 18th.
11th, 18th, second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, last sign.
Motion adjourned.
So do you have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.